Order the regular city council meeting of January 27, 2025. Members of the public are invited to attend in-person meetings in council chambers. Public access is also available by telephone by using the call-in numbers posted on the meeting agenda, and tonight's meeting will be broadcast on the city's YouTube channel online. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Leidy?
Here.
Mayor Protem Lukman-Hiramasa?
Here.
Councilmember Burns?
Here.
Councilmember Hadameo?
Here.
Councilmember Condo?
Here.
Councilmember Roper?
Here.
Councilmember Goff?
Here.
Councilmember Nowicki?
Here.
Councilmember Walker?
Here.
Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Acting City Manager Loveland, are there any responses to resident inquiry?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? Okay. We'll move into public invited to be heard. This is an opportunity for public comment on any item not set for public hearing. Statements are limited to five minutes per speaker. Statements must be related to city business and limited to matters of community interest. City Clerk Small, is there anyone signed up to speak to council tonight?
Yes, Madam Mayor, there are two individuals on the list. The first one is Tom Lampo.
Welcome. Please state your name and address and provide your comments to council.
Good evening.
Hello, everyone. I'm Tom Lampo, 3951 Jackson Way. Hope everybody is well. As usual, it's always good to be here and to live top North Glen in prayer. For a minute, I want to speak on the events from a week ago. We've made another impactful change to our lives, a change that we knew was coming, but still it might be a change not everyone was ready to embrace. But life does have consistencies, like change is inevitable. Maybe you were more comfortable with change that happened four years ago, or eight years ago, or 16 years ago. We all have different areas of comfort. Another consistency in life comes from Malachi 3:6, which states, "God says, 'I am the Lord; I change not.'" God does have an objective. He will achieve it, and that objective does not change. So bit of encouragement, God is always vigilant. He's always looking for an opening He's given. Open yourself up, let Him know you disagree with what is happening, and ask Him how this came to be. Or phrase it in any manner you're comfortable with. He'll meet you where you are. Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, in Jesus' name, we ask that You be with us. Your presence in North Glen is needed, and You are always welcome here. We give You all praise, glory, and honor. You wage war on our enemy strictly for us to call You God. We don't see the battles, but we do see the destruction from our enemy. Society is ever-changing. Our view of events is limited. You see the past, the present, and the future. What You see is complete. In our lives, we need what You see. We need the wisdom when all three are combined. In James 1:5, You tell us how to gain wisdom. It states, "If any of you lacks wisdom, you should ask God, who gives generously to all without finding fault, and it will be given to you." In our current times, give us Your wisdom so we may see the complete picture and reasoning of our current situation. You are our God, and we are Your people. In Jesus' precious name, we pray. Amen. Thank you, guys, and have a nice night.
Thank you very much.
The next person on the list is Sandy Konechny.
Good evening. Please state your name and address and provide your comments to council.
My name is Sandy Konechny at 1421 Kennedy Drive in North Glen, of course. And I just mostly I have an inquiry about technology. I'm retired technology several years ago, specializing in central operations, wide-area networks. Are we going to get 5G in the city? Or is that under discussion at all? Is this just comments? No.
You get five solid minutes.
Okay. In my experience, I don't have 5G in my neighborhood, but 5G is a problem in every neighborhood. It's been added to. People intermittently get their phones. I know when it happened in Lafayette, I was working out there at the time. You see people wandering the city trying to find a tower because you have to be directly under the tower. Big tech knew about this problem before they rolled it out, and like was my experience, oh, we'll fix it later, roll it out. So I'm hoping that we don't. I do work from home on occasion, and I depend on my phone when I do do that, and so it would be a big problem for me. That was the only thing that I was curious about.
Okay. Acting City Manager Loveland, do you have a quick response? This seems like a question you might know the answer to.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just briefly, that is through the wireless carriers, that's not necessarily something that the city offers.
Okay.
If there were desires to install towers, new cell towers, that would be something that they would likely bring forward to us.
I'm feeling a little dumb because how is 5G compared to the fiber that's going in in certain parts of the city?
Fiber is good.
So that...
The T-Mobile fiber lines that we ran to...
Yeah.
...locations for internet service.
Isn't there a plan for that to go citywide?
I believe that has.
So we do have...
That project has been done through the city for internet service.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if you're speaking specifically of...
No, the fiber is fine.
...cellphone tower connectivity when you get into certain areas.
For cellphones.
Okay.
Yeah.
So yes, so apparently I don't know the difference between them.
I don't know if they have to get approval or not, so just wanted to bring that up and let people know it's a problem.
We have to get some tech questions. Do we have any tech experts on the DICE? Councilmember Burns?
All right. So I think what you are referring to are some of like the dead zones from...
Oh, many.
Yeah, I have one near my house, too. City Attorney Hoffman, is this also sort of tying into the legislation coming down from the writer, not writer refusal, but the shock clock legislation coming down?
The shock clock legislation may impact this, but it's one component of various new technologies. So I think the issue is with 5G, it is more of a, from the cities, where the city's role is, it's the regulation of towers. It's not, we don't dictate whether they bring a certain technology. We just regulate the location through our land use regulations of where the towers can go.
Thank you. Yeah, that's about it.
Interesting.
Answers your question?
Okay.
Can I just...
Yes, jump on.
Because I did ask Brooke about this, because it can be spotty, the cell service. I have Verizon, and it does seem to be spotty. It's really up to the provider to put up cell towers, and so, and it's kind of a known issue that it can be spotty coverage. One of the things that I was encouraged to do again was let Verizon know, and the few residents that I had talked to, let them know this as well, to contact whoever your carrier is and say, hey, here's where I live, my service is spotty, is there anything you can do? Because one of the things is when they get feedback from folks, hopefully they kind of determine if they need a new tower or what they need where. You might also be able to inquire about the 5G service with them, what kind of service you're using.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who didn't have a chance to speak who would like to talk to council tonight? No? Is there anyone on the phone who would like to speak to council? You can press star six to unmute at this time. Okay. Hearing none, I would invite council to join me down front. Good evening. I would like to welcome our Director of Human Resources and Chief Diversity Officer Tamara Dixon is going to accept our first proclamation tonight. Whereas Black History Month is a time for us to reflect on and celebrate the broad scope of contributions Black Americans have made to our nation's history, culture, and achievements. And whereas the 2025 theme, African-Americans and Labor, highlights the pivotal role that the hard work of African-Americans has played in shaping our country's history, from the agricultural labor of enslaved Africans, which was foundational to the economic systems and expansion of this country, to the prosperous establishment of Black Wall Street, which was a demonstration of the brilliance and resilient abilities of Black corporate collaboration. This theme highlights how work has been central to both survival and empowerment. And whereas this theme underscores the importance of reflecting on the courageous efforts of Black workers throughout history, including those who have been integral to the nation's social and economic development through the ongoing fight for fair wages, equal employment opportunities, and the right to organize. And whereas 2025 marks the 100-year anniversary of the creation of the Brotherhood of Sleeping Carporters and Maids by labor organizer and civil rights activist A. Philip Randolph, which was the first Black union to receive a charter of the American Federation of Labor. Further, Black women such as Addie Wyatt also joined the ranks of union workers and leadership to advocate for job security, reproductive rights, and wage increases. And whereas the city of North Glen recognizes these struggles and achievements and celebrates Colorado's rich history of Black pioneers, miners, and railroad workers, and contemporary professionals in all aspects of labor who are vital to our shared social and economic landscape. Now, therefore, I, Meredith Leidy, Mayor of the City of North Glen, Colorado, do hereby proclaim February 2025 as Black History Month in the city of North Glen, and encourage all community members to reflect on the historical and ongoing contributions of Black Americans to ensure equality and further the opportunities for success and prosperity for all Americans. Dated at North Glen, Colorado, this 27th day of January 2025. So thank you for being here. Do you have additional things you'd like to share?
Just fun things. Actually, we have Wes Dunbar from the DICE board. He was actually going to come up, if he can come up with me, that'd be awesome. But I just want to say thank you for that acknowledgement. It's very meaningful in light of this past weekend. That gives me hope, and I appreciate you. Thank you.
Did you have any...
I told you not to give a preacher a mic, but that's just the way it goes. The emphasis on diversity is really important. It seems under attack these days. I just got back from a week in Alabama on the Civil Rights Trails Tour. I kind of do that annually. It's part of an effort in my work that I do to continue to educate people and to keep the message of freedom and survival, and so many things that this proclamation stands for that is important. And I just, it's absolutely invaluable that we continue to educate ourselves about all of the people, because diversity means women, too, so half of y'all might not be.
Thank you. Thank you. We're going to take a picture. We are. So we can put the two of you in the middle, and everybody squonch up. I'm pretty sure that's the word. All right, ready? One, two, three. Keep smiling. All right, one of those should work. Thank you. My apologies. I read the first one. My apologies, Mr. Dunbar. Okay. Our next one today, we also have Director of Human Resources and our Chief Diversity Officer Tamara Dixon is going to accept this one. This is the American Heart Month. Whereas cardiovascular disease remains the leading cause of death for people in the United States, accounting for nearly 30% of all deaths. And whereas congenital heart defects are the most common type of birth defect, affecting approximately one in every 100 births each year, highlighting the need to promote awareness and initiatives to improve newborn screening and provide funding needed for research and advancements in treatment to enable infants to live into adulthood. And whereas it is essential for all individuals to know their risk factors and take action to live a heart-healthy lifestyle, to include participating in regular physical activity, consuming a heart-healthy diet, maintaining a healthy weight, avoiding smoking, managing stress, getting regular checkups from healthcare professionals, and knowing the signs of heart disease. And whereas, American Heart Month is a vital opportunity to raise awareness about heart health and empower people to take proactive steps to prevent heart disease. The first Friday of American Heart Month, February 7, is also National Wear Red Day to raise awareness and support for the fight against heart disease. And whereas, this observance is also an opportunity for those who have been affected by heart disease and congenital heart defects to celebrate life, remember loved ones they have lost, and honor healthcare professionals who participate in research and provide critical care and rehabilitation services. And whereas, the city of North Glen is committed to improving the lives of all its residents through education, community activities, and support for the policies that reduce the risks associated with heart disease and congenital heart defects. Now, therefore, I, Meredith Leidy, Mayor of the City of North Glen, Colorado, do hereby proclaim February 2025 as American Heart Month in the city of North Glen. I urge all community members to participate in activities that promote heart health and to support the programs which have shown success in combating heart disease. Dated at North Glen, Colorado, this 27th day of January 2025. Well, thanks for being here again.
Just quickly, and I so appreciate this proclamation, I just really want to echo what Mary Leidy just said. My mother didn't live to see the age of 47. She died at 46 from heart failure. And please take care of your heart. This life is so fleeting and fast, and I know we tend to put ourselves last. Walk, everything in moderation, and just please take care of your heart. Thank you.
You ready? Smile, keep smiling. Got it? Thanks. Thank you. I see that. I'm just giving up. Councilmember Burns, how are you tonight?
Fine, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone who came and spoke. Thank you for these proclamations. What a fun way to kick off the night. I'll keep it brief. We had a CCPP meeting. I was unable to attend due to family obligations, but they did some elections of officers, talked about the emergency 911 magnets that City Clerk Small helped design and are amazing. And that is about it for me. Thanks. Great. Thank you. Councilmember Walker?
Thank you. The many great things that happened since we met, I want to highlight a few of the great ones that happened here in this city. First of all, while most of us were warm and snuggled up at home last weekend, I saw our snowplows out, doing an absolutely wonderful job. They did a great job the second round, too. And Chief, I even saw our animal control officer out working, too. So while we were warm at home, we know you guys are out there doing great services for us, so I wanted to say thank you. And thank you to Tom Lampo for coming to speak and his kind words. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hadameo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the Thursday, January 16, I attended the City of North Glen Annual Legislative Dinner, and yeah, couldn't forget that one for sure. So I was able to meet with the mayor of Brighton, and of course Senator Kyle Mulcahy was there, and the recently elected Julie Mulcahy was there, too. So she used to serve here on the City of North Glen City Council, and plenty of others. But yeah, it was good to get on the same page, and I want to thank Communications and everybody who put together the pamphlet, or for everybody to check out all the awesome work that North Glen's doing. It was wonderful, so thank you, staff. And that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nowicki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of things from me. So on the January 14, I had the privilege of touring the new West Pines in Westminster with Councilmembers Condo and Lukman-Hiramasa. It's a 144-bed facility, and they'll be treating mental health disorders in adolescents, adults, and older adults. So it's a much-needed resource, especially in Adams County. So that's very exciting. They'll be kind of, they're taking a few folks now, but they'll kind of ramp up as we head into summer, and they'll also be opening a detox as well. So that's really exciting. I also attended the legislative dinner as well, and it was a great opportunity to connect and hear about the legislative issues that are important in regards to North Glen. Today, we have the North Glen Senior Organization Board. So they, the new bus is up and running. It's not a van, it's a bus. And they, so they're super excited. They'll be taking trips every Thursday. Everybody really loves it. They did ask that, you know, in discussions around parking, one of the things I think they've run into now is that the bus is rather large. So, you know, issues around having space to park the bus. So in any kind of subsequent discussions around parking or things like that, they asked, maybe we could have a kind of reserved spot for the bus, but that can be in future discussions. Lastly, as Councilmember Walker alluded to, it's been quite snowy over the last couple weeks, which has been nice. Certainly gets me out doing some exercise. And it reminded me to give a shout out to the snowstormers, the people that volunteer their time. And if you're an able-bodied person living in North Glen and you really want to help out, I know there are plenty of seniors that could use the support, so please consider joining that program. That's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Condo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, the holidays can be a little bit overwhelming because there's just so much going on, but I do want to take a moment to acknowledge really the passing of a great man, a great leader, President Jimmy Carter. And it seems like, you know, when that happens over the holidays, people kind of forget that, you know, major events happen like this. So he is an Naval Academy graduate, a nuclear submarine officer, and I'm proud to say that I followed the same path, not that I plan on running for president. But he did publish this book, and I'm not promoting this book out of personal interest, but it is our endangered values. And his passing kind of prompted me to dig this out of the library and read it again. And I'm not going to give you a synopsis, but I will leave this in the executive conference room, should you want to flip the pages and hopefully get a kernel of wisdom from our former president, who was very well-regarded. Mayor Protem and I attended the Adams County inauguration, and as mentioned previously, Duran, Julie Duran-Mulcahy, that's a mouthful, my predecessor, was elected to county commissioner along with Kathy Hansen, a former Thornton council member, and Lynn Baca, of course, was re-elected to her second term. So it was very nice to be a part of that and celebrating the installation of the new commissioners as well as the judges. So, and then one final statement, and I know Councilmember Hadameo, you said that in humor, I think, at the last official meeting, you kind of characterized me as a pollinator expert. I am not, and I just want to say that for the public record. I am a beekeeper, so I will freely admit to that. But, you know, clearly my role here is to help with policy and budget. Maybe after I leave the days, I can help the city. But again, it's been a privilege, and I really very much appreciate the jocularian ribbing that goes on here on the dais. and I really very much appreciate the jocularian ribbing that goes on here on the days, but please don't misinterpret that I am a pollinator expert. That's all I have to say, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Council Member Goff?
Thank you, Mayor. I also attended the Adams County inauguration, and it was a lovely event, lots of networking, I guess I could say, and wanted to welcome our new Commissioners, if they're listening. And then, on the 16th, no, excuse me, the 15th, January 15th, I attended the Adams County Regional Economic, I can never remember, Policy or something, I can never remember what the last, the last letter, the acronym stands for. But anyway, we had a breakfast meeting, and it was, the focus was thinking about the legislative session upcoming and what might happen and how it might affect our economic development. One thing that came out of that, which maybe some of you have heard on the news already, is that the state's budget projected shortfall is not quite as horrendous as originally estimated, now it's only about $650 million. So, and then, let's see, on the, then, I also attended CC4CA, which is Colorado Communities for Climate Action Executive Committee Meeting. Again, it was kind of, well, this one really didn't talk too much about the legislative session, it was more about planning the coming year in general. We have an annual retreat every year, and they decided to change the name of that, so it sounds a little bit more official, for some reason, it's going to be the annual meeting. And there's going to be more focus on how to incorporate equity into our strategic plans, we had a staff person who had started that initiative about a year or so ago, and then she had a death in the family, so was kind of on hold. And then, let's see, and then, oh, January 16th, I did testify to the Air Quality Control Commission, they are looking at updating their rules for air quality, and we, I did testify in behalf of our residents that we would like to have our air quality improved, and there's not as much as we can do on our own because of I-25 going down the middle of our community, so I was able to speak to that. I did also want to just mention that with this horrible weather, it has kind of cut thing, cut down on people's getting out and about, wanted to thank our staff that have to go out and work in it, and I know that's never any fun, and I also wanted to just thank and honor all the people who went out and marched on Martin Luther King Day in Denver or wherever, just because I know that was the worst day, I didn't even open the front door, I didn't even go outside at all, so, very glad that we had the proclamation today. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Council Member Retha?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a couple of things for tonight. On January 14th, Mayor Protem, Director Borges, and myself, we had a community meeting with the residents on Livingston Drive in regard to the speed hump, removal of the speed hump situation, and we really heard their feedback on what they would like, what is doable as far as a financial situation, and we, I think, developed some great steps moving forward. Then, I also attended the legislative dinner, which was amazing and wonderful. And then, lastly, I just wanted to say a huge shout out, over the weekend, I was with my daughter at Starbucks, and we saw one of the traffic cabinet wraps that had been put into place, and I don't know if you guys know teenagers, but it is not often that teenagers just give out compliments, and she was like, "Mom, those are really cool." So, we got a really cool, and it did look beautiful, and she loved the little bird on it, so it was, I think it's a great addition to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will also start by thanking our staff and the great job that they did with snow removal, I think it's worth saying that, just because they don't get kudos enough, so thank you. I do want to quickly also say that I'm thankful for both of those proclamations, but the proclamation on the American Heart Month also hits very close to home, because just Friday was the fourth death anniversary of my grandson who passed from a congenital heart defect. So, it's very important, I think that awareness is top of mind, and pregnancy screenings are so important, there was nothing they could do for him, he lived for 10 minutes, so he was earthside for a little while, but I just want to say thank you so much for that acknowledgement, and of course, Black History Month is very important as well. I will keep mine short, because it seems that I attended everything that everyone else attended, so I also did a tour of West Plains Behavioral Hospital, and Council Member Nowicki really reported out on that very well. It was great, because Jessica Hulse, Director of Crew, Program Manager of Crew, also went with us, and Sergeant Chubb. So I think it was really special to have both of that representation from Crew and from our police department, and be able to ask questions of what is this going to look like in terms of getting people that need help to this facility in the future. And we're pretty lucky, because it's close, it's in Westminster. There's definitely a need for it in the state in general, and they will be accepting folks from all over. I attended the Adams County swearing-in, as was mentioned, for the Commissioners, congratulations, and also for Deputy District, for our District Attorney, Brian Mason was re-sworn in. Livingston Traffic Calming, thank you to Director Borges and Greg, our engineer, because you both did such a fantastic job listening to folks, and I think they all felt heard, and it was actually a really great meeting. Worked for it, we can get a bit spicy, so I thought it went really well. Our legislative dinner was amazing, this is the first time we've actually had representatives that are not just our state representatives, we also invited Congressman Gabe Evans, and he sent his district director, who attended, which is Mayor Greg Mills from Brighton, as well as, we had Adams County Commissioners there, Mulcahy, and Odericio, and Commissioner Baca, all attended as well, and I thought that was, it was really neat to see that they recognize that we want that partnership and that collaboration when it comes to the things that are happening in our city and legislation, so, excellent meeting, and that is all I have to report out today. Thank you.
Great. Okay, well, I have a few things, ditto on some of those pieces. Council Member Nowicki, I got to drive the bus today.
That's right.
It was so fun. And, and our senior friends cheered me on when I made a very tight turn, so, it's, yeah, it was very fun, so that'll be the February edition of the Mayor's Monthly Minute, is highlighting, highlighting the best, so that was a good time. Back on the 16th, as I had mentioned last time, I was a panelist for someone called Bridging the Gap, that was hosted by Civic Results, and it was an opportunity for municipal leaders to share their thoughts with our state legislators, so we could offer some advice on how to partner with us better, and share some successes and some challenges along the way, so that was, I was honored to be a part of that panel. Mile High Flood District Meeting was also that week. I was also on another panel for the Denver Democracy Summit last Friday, and that was an honor to be with my colleagues talking about democracy in Denver, and what that looks like. The Mayor Johnston hosted all the mayors at the Stock Show, and it was very fun, it was nice to see everybody, but also, he gave a very beautiful speech, just kind of about the state of affairs right now, and one of the quotes he said was, "We are all bound by the spirit of the West." And it was very powerful in the moment, because he was talking a lot about, you know, struggles right now, and, and our communities, and, and really, you know, being inclusive and welcoming to all people, so it was, it was a lovely speech, and it was nice to be with my colleagues, and I got to spend a full day with them again at the Metro Mayor's Caucus Retreat on Saturday. And so, some highlights, we talked about our policy priorities as a caucus, we had presentations by Representatives from CML, CCI, Congressman Evans came by, and, but one of the highlights for me was the Mayor Protem of Lyons is a woman named Paula Stone Williams. She's a trans woman who was our guest speaker, kind of keynote for the day, and it was a very powerful experience, it was a beautiful speech, it was very applicable, and it would be, I would hope, I would like to connect her with our diceboard. There's some interesting lessons to be learned from, from her work, and she's a featured TED coach, actually, she coaches TED speakers internationally, she works for TED, has quite a few TED Talks of her own, so you could find her there, but that was definitely a highlight. And then, just a heads up, next Monday, I will not be here, so Mayor Protem will be running the meeting. I have the honor, which I'm excited about. My other job, I will be presenting at the Partners in Education Conference at the Kennedy Center in Washington DC, so excited about that. And I will move it on, City Clerk Small, how are you?
I'm doing well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a couple of quick items. I wanted to announce that this Saturday, the City Clerk's Office will be hosting our first Passport Saturday Event of the year. It also kicks off our first Donation Drive of the year, so all during the month of February, we will be offering a free passport photo for customers who would like to bring in non-perishable food items, those will benefit the Immaculate Heart of Mary Food Bank. The Saturday event is intended for customers who need appointments on the weekend, and we have also planned additional Saturday events in the months of May, July, and November, so we're excited for those. And then, the second item is, in partnership with the City Attorney, we will be hosting Board and Commission Training this Thursday at 6:00 PM here in the community rooms at City Hall, so we're very excited to be meeting with Board and Commission members, and also wanted to mention that City Council is more than welcome to attend that training as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Acting City Manager Loveland?
No updates for me, thank you.
Okay, City Attorney Hoffman?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, I do not have any updates this evening.
Okay. All right, thank you so much. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve. Seconded.
Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I will close that vote, and the consent agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you, we have a public hearing tonight. Public hearing, CB 2025, comments are limited to five minutes per speaker, will the City Clerk please read the title?
A Bill for a Special Ordinance Amending the 2024 Budget, Recognizing Revenues and Appropriating Expenditures by Supplemental Appropriation for the Payment of the Costs and Expenses of the Municipal Government Agencies and Offices of the City of North Glenn, Colorado, for the Fiscal Year Beginning January 1, 2024.
Move for approval?
I think I just, hold on.
Dang it, I was so excited.
I will now open the public hearing on CB 2025, is there anyone who would like to speak, either for or against CB 2025? Hearing done, I will close the public hearing. Ordinances on Second Reading, CB 2025, supplemental appropriation, is there a motion to approve on second reading?
Motion to approve.
Acting City Manager Jason Loveland will provide a summary of this item.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council, I will not read the long title, but this is, was initially presented on January 13th, I'll refer to the memorandum provided, really this is recognizing, as stated in the title, the revenues and expenditures in 2024 that had not initially or originally been budgeted. So many of the items, as you can see, specifically to the General Fund, are revenues from grant awards, and then the corresponding expenditure being recognized as happening in 2024. Again, I will not go through the detailed list, but happy to answer any questions, and staff recommends approval.
Does Council have any questions? No, okay. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I will close that vote, and CB 2025 on second reading passes unanimously.
I will now recess the regular City Council meeting and call to order a meeting of the Marijuana Licensing Authority. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Leidy?
Here.
Mayor Protem Luke Manhira Masa?
Here.
Council Member Burns?
Here.
Council Member Harameo?
Here.
Council Member Condo?
Here.
Council Member Roper?
Here.
Council Member Goff?
Here.
Council Member Nowicki?
Here.
Council Member Walker?
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the January 13th, 2025, meeting?
So moved.
Seconded.
Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
And the vote closes with the minutes passing unanimously.
CR 13, will the Clerk please read the title?
A Resolution Making Findings of Fact in Support of the Decision to Grant an Application for the Change of Location for the Medical Marijuana Center and Retail Marijuana Store Licenses to Physician Preferred Products LLC Doing Business as Doc's Apothecary.
Move for approval?
Seconded.
All right, Senior Deputy City Clerk Lisa Andrews will provide a summary of this item.
So as you'll recall, we had a public hearing on January 13th regarding the application filed by Physician Preferred Products LLC to relocate Doc's Apothecary from 2100 East 112th Avenue, Unit Number 5, to 2150 East 112th Avenue. And at the conclusion of the public hearing, the authority directed the attorney to the authority to draft a resolution approving the application to change the location. So you have that resolution before you tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the application or the resolution.
I don't see any, thank you. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
And the vote is closed with the resolution passing unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will now adjourn the meeting of the Marijuana Licensing Authority and reconvene the regular City Council meeting. We have a discussion item tonight on natural medicine, City Attorney Hoffman will present this item to Council.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, it may, maybe it's a little bit fortuitous that this discussion item is the same night that you also acted as the Marijuana Licensing Authority, because it's a good way to differentiate between what the city's authority is as it relates to regulation of marijuana versus the regulation of natural medicine. And quite frankly, it has much less authority to regulate natural medicine than it does marijuana. And so the purpose of tonight's discussion is really to get some high-level direction on the types, if any, of regulation that the city may want to consider related to natural medicine. Because it can't license, and is limited to really what are known as time, place, and manner regulations, it can look to adding regulations in its zoning ordinance, in terms of the types of zoning districts where healing centers would be allowed, or it can look at other types of regulations, such as distance limitations, hours of operation, screening and the like. In North Glenn, marijuana is not regulated really as a matter of zoning, it's regulated as a matter of licensing. So by way of example, a marijuana business is another type of retail store, that's really not differentiated from other types of retail businesses as a matter of zoning. Instead, it's regulatory schemes and licensing. For natural medicine, it would be different. If you wanted the same types of regulation, for example, for hours of operation, it would have to be in the code, likely in the zoning ordinance, and it would be probably coupled with the types of zoning districts where healing centers would be allowed. So by way of example, I would suggest you probably wouldn't want them in residential districts. It tends to be more of a commercial-type business with healing centers acting as kind of a hybrid of a counseling center that provides a product. And so this is really just an, an opportunity to respond to questions and get kind of a high-level temperature from you all in terms of the types of regulation, if any, that you would like. As of the date of the memo, the city hadn't gotten any inquiries yet as to natural medicine centers, but it's my understanding that the Community Development Department, since the memo, has gotten one informal inquiry about locating a healing center in the city. So it's a timely discussion, and really, it's about what level of regulation, if any, the city would like to consider.
Okay, Council Member Condo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and City Attorney Hoffman, thank you for answering my email, I really appreciate that. So does this mean that if we want to get ahead of the curve, we need to start scrubbing through all our commercial zone? the curve, we need to start scrubbing through all our commercial zoning ordinances and things of that nature to say, okay, yes, healing center here, and we ought to put these proviso statements that you talked about? What is the way forward, I guess, is what I'm trying to understand?
Yeah, I wouldn't suggest it's that deep of a dive, because the question is whether you want to regulate. If you want to regulate, then I think we, staff could come back with the right recommendations in terms of the types of commercial districts that these may be appropriate for. And it could be industrial areas as well. So we could do a deeper dive. But what makes this different is that with marijuana, the city didn't undergo that exercise at all. Instead, it was able to do it through licensing and treat the marijuana businesses as a different type of retail store. And so part of that threshold question is, do you want to include it as zoning, which would differentiate it from marijuana, but because you don't have the ability to do anything else for natural medicine?
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Nowicki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, so just a few questions, and kind of think out loud through this. So we would have to kind of state that we want it in commercial and not residential, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so yeah, I think that seems pretty important. I am curious, and I don't know if you know about, or kind of what you know about this, but are the healing centers, they're not actually, are they growing the product there? Are they receiving the product from another place? Do you know that information?
I don't know the level of detail. That's pretty much regulated at the state level.
Okay. So I guess the only other, I guess, concern I would have is kind of disposal of any kind of waste materials or product materials.
And that is something the city can regulate. It regulates it with marijuana. So in terms of disposal, that is absolutely the kind of thing we could regulate as a time, place, and manner restriction. And as you know, we operate our own, the city provides the sewer service. So there is, you know, a good basis under our police power to make sure, to the extent disposal impacts the services we provide, including sewer service, that we would be warranted in doing so.
Okay. So yeah, I guess as I kind of look through it, those are really the only two concerning areas I have, I suppose.
Councilmember Goff?
Thank you. So Attorney Hoffman, I guess I just wanted some clarification to make sure I do understand that right now, the procedure for doing, for making this happen is different. But with medical marijuana, we do have restrictions. There can't be so many feet from schools, things like that. Would we be able to do the similar kind of regulation, but just going this other route?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Councilmember Goff, that was going to be my question. So we could do, so criteria for location that we do for marijuana businesses, for example, like within 200 feet of any single or multifamily residential, I guess that would be different. But 500 feet of a licensed childcare facility. I think the state has 1,000 feet from any public school already in there, is what I read. So we could do that, like 1,000 feet from any halfway house or correctional facility, for example.
If Council's inclined to look at distance limitations, we can look at them and make sure that we can make a recommendation as to the maximum types of distance limitations that would be possible, looking at both what the law is about those limitations and also looking at making sure it does not have the effect of excluding. And that's one of the issues with natural medicine that is different. With marijuana, you could prohibit altogether. With natural medicine, you can't adopt regulations that would indirectly have the effect of excluding. So we would just have to do the concentric circles like we often do to make sure that in doing distance limitations, there are still places that they can be located. And for what it's worth, those places that they could be located don't have to be available. So if you have a strip center that is completely leased, that could be your location. And just because there's not a current vacancy doesn't mean it has the effect of excluding. It just has to be a place where they can be approved at some point if they're available.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much for that clarification. And, you know, just thinking about like how many within a city can happen. So you could put distance limitations from one facility to another? That doesn't have the effect of excluding. Okay, so that is a possibility.
But that's the type of, that's the type of analogy. If Council's direction is, yes, we think distance limitations are a way we would like to exercise our power, then we would go back and figure out what that might look like in terms of a broader regulatory scheme and come back with recommendations.
Okay, thank you. I would definitely be in favor of having some type of regulation then. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I have a couple of questions, and I know it's in the memo, so I'm not, I'm asking a question redundantly on purpose. Can you define natural medicine?
Well, it is essentially what we refer to as magic mushrooms. So that's probably my best definition.
Well, I just, I think there's another use of the phrase "natural medicine," and so if residents are watching this, they may be very confused why we would even discuss regulating location at all.
And it is psilocybin is the technical term, but again, when this was approved statewide, it was certainly known as mushrooms.
Okay. And it is, you know, supposed to be for adults 21 and over. Have other cities in our area, Adams County specifically, have they just adopted the state regulation? Has anyone else changed it up?
I know that other communities are looking at it. I don't know that they have adopted them yet, but for example, North Glenn got an inquiry from Thornton as to what North Glenn was doing. And so, yeah, and so I think communities across the state are looking at it. I know that in, for example, Douglas County, the communities there have already adopted regulations with pretty strict time, place, and manner regulations, and those were in place before the end of the year, last year.
Okay. Because I see in your memo, like one of the decisions that we can make is to defer to state law. And so if we choose to add and enhance some of the restrictions, do you just want to know that, yes, we want to enhance it, and then we'll talk about it later, or?
With some general direction about the type of enhancements. So I've heard, for example, distance limitations, disposal, it can be hours of operation, which is something certainly I would recommend if you're inclined to do it, things like screening, things like lighting.
Okay. So does Council want to go with additional? Yes, maybe? Yes. Okay, so at another time, we will develop those.
That's what we needed to know. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are publicly invited to be heard. This is an opportunity for public comment. Once again, statements are limited to three minutes per speaker. Comments must be related to an item previously addressed by Council during the meeting. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to Council at this time? Yeah, come on up. State your name and address and provide your comments.
Yeah, sorry. I did not realize natural medicine would come up. I'm a natural wellness practitioner. I have a homeopathic doctor. There are so many natural medicine practices. So I wanted to put that out there. You know, there's homeopathy, there's Ayurvedic medicine practitioners. These people are actual doctors of their field. So I just wanted to throw that out there, because it kind of, great when they say, oh, that's magic mushrooms. No, that's kind of like a marijuana thing, in my opinion. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. Okay, I will entertain a motion that the city hold executive sessions for the first one pursuant to Section 4.5b of the City of North Glenn City Charter for the review of applications for any appointive position regarding the municipal judge, and two pursuant to Section 4.5a of the City of North Glenn City Charter for personnel matters regarding council appointee evaluations.
Motion to adjourn as suggested to executive session.
I'll second.
Please open the vote.
The vote is open. And I will close that vote. The motion to meet in executive session passes unanimously.
We will adjourn to the executive session.